Good evening. I will call the December Common Council meeting to order. Everyone has indicated present for the meeting. Thank you all for being here and thank you to those and welcome to those joining here in person or from home. Third item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a silent prayer in lieu of invocation. I invite you to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda this evening is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is attachment number one in our council packets.
Dispense with reading, place on file.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Motion by Kirkpatrick, second by Whirl. Any discussion? Seeing none, move into vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. That passes. Next item on our agenda is the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Those wishing to address the body this evening may do so after being recognized by a council member. Please indicate that you have a request to speak so that way we can identify your willingness. You may do so on an item appearing before our agenda this evening and which you'll be invited to the podium to introduce yourself and hit the microphone button to make sure you're picked up on the recording and the live stream at home. Next item on our agenda is my report, item number six. Good evening, alderperson, city staff and residents here or watching from home. As with previous month's report, I will highlight some of the many items that crossed my desk or partake in following the last council meeting. Last month, I had the opportunity to attend the annual National League of Cities, Congress of Cities and exposition. The conference's sessions included discussions on the importance of data and innovation in communities, community branding and marketing, and creating communities that attract and retain young adults and families to our community. I have detailed many of the sessions I attended in my community updates but would highlight two of them that most stood out for purposes tonight. The first, supporting entrepreneurship. With the key objective of the city enabling an environment that creates jobs, triggers economic growth and generates local revenue, builds entrepreneurship into the core of our agenda, is vital. The session included a panel discussion from leaders in technology, civic investment and government entities who shared many best practices for fostering entrepreneurship. A key takeaway I had was that many entrepreneurs are looking for places that have access to expertise, a great quality of life and access to investment capital. From what I learned at the session, I'm pleased with the progress we're making in positioning ourselves to better meet entrepreneurial needs for incubation and acceleration. We are finalizing development and near a public launch of our Grow Rapids portal, a solution that seeks to provide information to budding entrepreneurs on market information, community resources and incentives available. Presentation will be forthcoming on that from the Planning and Economic Development Department and myself at a future meeting. Additionally, I will soon be working to form a citywide business advocacy team, CBAT is the acronym, a cross-departmental team that will work collaboratively and serve as problem solvers to minimize roadblocks or delays and help entrepreneurs right here start their businesses with fewer obstacles. First announced at State of the City address in January, CBAT will be a team of advocates inside City Hall, charged with proactively reviewing ordinances, policies to minimize delay and to help create business opportunities. These are a great start but obviously there's more that can be done. Entrepreneurs and small businesses are important to achieving greater economic prosperity for our community and we'll continue to work to develop solutions to improve our current processes and better respond to businesses' needs. Another valuable session focused on facilitating meaningful civic engagement. Recognizing that effective engagement requires more than just one-way communication, many municipalities are working to find strategies for joining with residents to collaborate in effective problem solving, to find ways to help improve city services and solve community problems. Over my terms as mayor, I've set a focus on improving the opportunities that residents from youth to adults have to become involved in community affairs. From the Mayor's Council on Beautification with its focus on visual improvements projects throughout the city to Mayor's Councils on Sustainability and Youth, both are near launching, there are many opportunities for people to be involved around interest areas to enhance our city. Recently, we've also seen engagement and feedback through aquatics ad hoc committees to focus on understanding the usage and operational challenges of our current pool and understand how to engage residents in dealing with aquatics in our community. Even with these opportunities available and upcoming in our community, we always recognize that more can be done. The Congress of Cities session was a great opportunity to share our successes and learn from other municipalities what worked well and best practices for fostering meaningful civic engagement, among other topics. I look forward to formally announcing additional opportunities for residents and council members to get involved in the future. On the subject of trains, as was written recently in a community update of mine, I shared that I've spoken with CN Government Affairs about our ongoing disruptions and blockages. I'm sure you've heard from many residents regarding these as well. CN has stressed that their operations staff are also looking into them, in which we are expecting and still awaiting a response. As with them at CN, as with they at CN, they do not enjoy stopped trains any more than we do because obviously time is money to them as well. I will share more information as it becomes available with these conversations. The Aquatics Ad Hoc Committee held their last meeting December 3rd, in which the meeting involved consideration and discussed options presented to them over the previous meetings, in which their last meeting generated a recommendation which we will consider later this evening on tonight's agenda. And finally, holiday events and employee service recognition. With the holiday season upon us, City Hall will be celebrating by inviting the public to our first City Hall open house event this Thursday from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. The open house is meant to serve multiple purposes, to celebrate and recognize those who serve on various boards, commissions and committees, and to meet and get to know city staff and various members of our community. To prepare City Hall for the event, area students have worked on decorating paper ornaments that are being placed on trees located throughout the first floor of City Hall here in the lobby, as you probably noticed on your way in this evening. There will be holiday music performed by a local group and cookies, holiday cookies and refreshments from local businesses will be served. Finally, donations of non-perishable canned goods will be accepted to support our local food bank. All are invited to join at this event. This week, several employees will be recognized for reaching milestones in employment over the last year, including one retirement. Those employees are Dave Batten, 25 years to the city, service to the city, Sharon Borckert, 35 years, Jim Borski, 30 years, Laurel Gamma, 25 years, David Kirkman, 25 years, Yvonne Mason, 25 years, Jim Nitzel, 35 years and Jan Olson, 40 years. Additionally, I'd like to recognize the retirement of our city engineer, Dave Lasba, who after 36 years of service to the city will be retiring in just a few short weeks. And in recognition of his service, I'd like to present a plaque to Dave. So Dave, will you come on up front for me to present this to you?
Thanks, Dave. Appreciate it. You may head back to your spot. I understand you've got a speech to give?
Well, I just wanted to recap my 9,490 days with the city. No, I guess after 36 and a half years, it's time for my career to come to an end. I've served under six mayors, possibly as many as 75 alderpersons. When I started with the city on July 3rd, 1978, the new City Hall had just opened, Rapids Mall would open soon and construction had began on the West River Expressway and East Jackson Street. There was six traffic signals in the city and roundabouts weren't even thought of. The day I started working with the city, the city engineer, Roy Elmhurst, asked me to stay five years. Well, my first eight years was traffic and design engineer, the next 11 years assistant city engineer and one year's interim city engineer and the last 16 and a half as city engineer. I've enjoyed the opportunity to serve the citizens of Wisconsin Rapids and I thank them for giving me the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. We've joked at administrative meetings that it's like Dave's month. So Dave's first recognition tonight, his recognition tomorrow and in subsequent days. So please congratulate Dave as you see him and as we thank him for his service and others that we've acknowledged here tonight. Next item on the agenda is a petition and an ordinance for direct annexation of 1.48 acres of city-owned property located generally on the northeast corner of Oak Street, the 21st Place North, right of way from the town of Grand Rapids. Council members, the attachments two, three and four are in your packet. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that? Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve all, make a motion to approve everything within item seven as presented.
Inclusive of special ordinance 370, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Motion to approve by Kirkpatrick, second by Furkey. Move into discussion. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, did you want to speak on the motion?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, move into a vote. All in favor, I guess please cast your ballots via your remote, I'm sorry.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero nays.
Thank you. Item number eight on our agenda is the report of the Planning Commission meeting held December 8th. The Planning Commission met at 5:00 p.m. on December 8th, 2014, in the first floor conference room of City Hall. All members were present except for Tim Burkhauser and myself. Dave Lasba acted as chairman, pretty fitting for his last Planning Commission meeting in my absence. Also attending were Adam Teagan and Joe Eichsted. The report from the October 6th Planning Commission meeting was motion and seconded and was carried. Under maps and plats received, there was a map and plat from Aspirus Wassa Hospital Incorporated on a street vacation request to vacate a portion of Oak Street. Public Works Committee did recommend approval at their December 2nd meeting in which it was moved and seconded to recommend the vacation of the part of, portion of Oak Street lying west of State Highway 54 in which that motion was carried. Item two was an annexation request, which we just acted on, if I'm not mistaken. It was a motion and a second to recommend the annexation, that motion carried. Item three, a public hearing was held on Plan 142569, which we were, the city of Wisconsin Rapids, the applicant is requesting a rezoning from R2 to B5 in that district or of that corner of property. Item four was action on that plan. There was a motion and a second to recommend rezoning from the R2 pending annexation, which was just completed to B5, and that motion carried. Item five was a motion to adjourn, which that concludes the report of the Planning Commission held December 8th. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that report? We have a motion by Kellogg to approve the report. Is there a second? Second by Kirkpatrick. Any discussion on the report? Seeing none, we'll move into vote. All in favor, please cast your ballots and opposed, I suppose, as well.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero nays.
Thank you. Item number nine, under new business. Item A is a discussion regarding restructuring of the Finance, Treasurer and Public Works Departments. Guess in preparation for this, just have a couple of comments that obviously A and B are somewhat connected in the, in one way, that from the committee, the whole, where both of these were introduced, where the openings due to retirements and restructuring opportunities were presented for discussion. Item B is the action on one of the two decisions that will still need to be made and that decision and one of the other will result in future action relating to the job descriptions that will follow. And I'd expect based on internal meetings that we should be ready for January consideration of those other items. Later in the meeting, you also have the opportunity to act on my appointment, interim city engineer for that appointment and then which there'll be a final report or restructuring proposal from the Finance Department that will occur subsequent to any action that the council will take tonight, likely in February. So just as opening comments to that item, which I will open up, I guess item 9A is the discussion regarding any of the three items, Finance, Treasurer or Public Works Departments. Council members, any, just anybody wishing to discuss? Seeing none, we'll move into item B, 9B if anyone doesn't have any opposition to that. Item B is a charter ordinance removing the treasurer as an elected officer, naming the finance director an officer and providing that the statutory duties of the treasurer be performed by the finance director, which is attachment number five in your council packets this evening, in which I will entertain a motion on the charter ordinance.
I'd make a motion, Your Honor.
We have a motion to approve by Stack and a second by, is there a second by anybody on there? Anybody wish to second the motion? We have a second by Whirl. Now we'll move into discussion as soon as Shane's computer checks up. There we go. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please. You're first.
I was just going to make a motion to approve it.
Oh, okay. Got that base covered. Alderperson Rayom, you're next.
Yeah, I guess just clarification. Finance Director is being put in but the duties that he is assuming is what the treasurer has now. Nothing, nothing added or...
That's correct. You're asking about the job description of the finance director, right?
Right.
Yeah, they'll come subsequent to this action, should it be favorable this evening, in which they would come back in January, February, depending on February for finances, job descriptions related to that. Recognizing that Dave's transition is a couple of months out and, you know, we've got some time to still work through those motions. Further discussion? So you know further wishes, requests to speak? We'll move into action on that item. Please cast your ballots. The motion was to approve the charter ordinance removing the treasurer as an elected officer, naming the finance director an officer and providing that the statutory duties of the treasurer be performed by the finance director.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero nays.
Thank you. Item number C this evening, 9C, actually before I move on to that one is clarification. If anyone has any further comments, the job descriptions for public works director will be coming in January as it relates to any other public work structure changes at that point. Item number 9C, Aquatics Ad Hoc Committee update and possible action on the committee's recommendation for the mayor and city staff to pursue a partnership with the Southwood County YMCA. Under 11H are the actual minutes from those three meetings held October 28th, November 12th and December 3rd. In a nutshell, we began our charge to discuss public aquatics facilities in which we assembled an ad hoc committee that you all assembled. We had those three meetings with the ultimate hopes of having a recommendation to the full council in December, which is at this meeting, and that recommendation was to consider, is to further pursue that partnership. I would entertain questions or comments from anybody here at the body or if anyone wishes to speak that's here in the audience as well. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please. You're first.
Thank you. Looks like most of these, if not all of these meetings took place before the announcement that, or the vote, I guess, that Riverview is going to be taken over by Aspirus. And this was kind of a project, this YMCA project was sort of something that stemmed out of an agreement between Riverview and YMCA.
Correct.
Where does that stand now? I guess what is, or is there a level of partnership from Aspirus on it? What is that and how is that playing out?
Yeah, raise a very valid question. At our last meeting, it was clarified to us that Aspirus plans to 100% fully support the project, that they were committed to it and as they learned more about it and actually got excited about it. And Brett from the YMCA is here this evening. Brett, if you had any additional comments of that nature, he is also available to answer any questions from anybody here as well. But it was a resounding support of the proposed YMCA facility, you know, so from that front, nothing has changed, based on the information we had at our last meeting and Brett's nodding to indicate nothing's changed to this day.
Okay. When would, what would be the timetable, the timeframe that this would all be going down at?
It's a really great question. City staff and I, based on hopeful affirmation again yet tonight on this recommendation to move forward, is we've got some legal things to get figured out with some of the bond attorneys because if we're going to promote access to a facility, we need to figure out to what extent we can afford it, if we need to finance it, which is likely the case, what limitations or what legalities exist for us to be able to do so. And we want to make sure we get the affirmation from the council before we spend too much more time with bond attorneys on that front. So our hope is that we would have those answers for us going into January, mid to late January. I would personally like to see, provided that we've got some information assembled, there may be the possibility to bring that back to the aquatics committee to present what capabilities exist to finance and then on the same side, what would we get for access? Because there's two trains of thought, one of which we own the facility, one of which we do not own the facility, in which case there are obviously pros and cons to both of those, lesser I think to cons on either. It really is somewhat indifferent but we want to get some expertise on financing side of it first and then bring back to the council what that would look like.
What are we talking about for groundbreaking?
Brett, you're talking, was it spring, early spring, I mean, early summer, late spring, weather dependent, June 1st?
Spring to June of 15?
Of 2015. An open late of 2016, potentially?
Okay. And then I guess maybe this is a little bit far, far out in the grand scheme of things yet, but what are we anticipating or projecting this facility itself to look like?
You're talking the aquatics facility specifically?
Correct. I mean, because we've had so many different ideas that have been brought up and then shelved and then brought up and then shelved and then recreated and shelved over the years that I think it's beneficial for us to know exactly what it is that, because I don't think we're just going to be getting a pool.
Right.
As it sits.
You raise a good point. We did do a review, Brett had done a review of all of the information that's been in my office from past planning practices from, that the city has participated in, right? So that review had occurred. In specific terms, the final programming has not been done of the aquatics facility, part of which I think is dependent upon what the financials look like from a capital standpoint to build and Brett can chime in with some of his thoughts on that as well. And then operationally, the why, if they're going to be the operator, to what extent they're able to operate the facility. But Brett, did you want to speak a little bit further on that point?
I think I did that right, yeah.
Please, yeah, we got you.
I just figured I'd come up here if you have any questions, but you're absolutely right, Mayor Bruink, that, you know, as we're looking at it conceptually, I think what you can look at is, is we're initially thinking two bodies of water with a capacity load of about 560 individuals between those two bodies. So a zero-depth family recreation pool with all the different splash features and slides that you would come to expect. You see that with indoor aquatic features. And then a eight-lane competitive pool is being looked at in conjunction with that.
And this would be a year-round facility?
Absolutely, yes.
And then I guess the last question I have before I'll let it go is, do we have an idea of where we're going to be doing this? Because I know the original proposal was pretty much adjacent to or on the Riverview campus. I'm just curious if that had changed in light of recent situation?
No, essentially with our, our planning, it's still continuing to be looked at, the Riverview Hospital, obviously that campus. As you raised the question before, you know, we have a new collaborative partner. You know, we're excited to work with them, they're excited to work with us. Obviously it's helping to get them up to fully, up to speed with this work that's taken place to that, but all our indications continue to move forward in that direction.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
And on the facility kind of planning process, so the city's involvement has been twofold, one of which of working through the past agreements that the council had worked through related to the planned unit design that happened, or development that happened at the hospital and obviously the aquatics facility. So both of those are occurring. Further discussion? Alderperson Stack, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Looking ahead, what will be the, what will be the use of the pool at the high school? How is that?
Of the existing?
The existing pool, right. They'll continue that structure?
As we understood, and that's part of the reason why it made sense for Colleen as a superintendent for the public school system to be a part of the committee. They indicated that they do have plans to operate their pool. They do have some challenges related to hosting of meets and competitive, from a competitive diving standpoint within the lanes, but, you know, and that does have a public component as well, that we did discuss briefly in our ad hoc discussions was the fact that they do allow the public mornings and some of the evening open swim spots. So conceivably there's a public component as well to that. But the, to answer your question, yes, they do indicate their plans to continue to operate. However, to Brett's point about partnership, I think it was expressed in our committee meeting was that the, very much the high school was very interested in partnering with the Y or partnering with whoever may operate or own that facility to use it for competitive purposes.
Because I had heard too about the concerns about some meets at the school.
Right, exactly. And I think that's a, you raise a very valid point. If we can't host those meets, you know, it's a detractor to us as we build our swim program and other things. Anybody else have any requests to speak, questions for Mr. Solzschneider, anybody? Alderperson Rayom, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. And having been a part of the committee that met, I fully support the route that we're looking at taking. I'd also encourage, I think, and as mentioned that evening, to come back to the committee or, you know, and you mentioned different scenarios of, with finance and that of how to do it, but I guess what I mainly want to say and stress tonight is that it goes through that, it doesn't just come back to the council to make a decision without further discussion or by that. discussion or by that committee or, you know, a full discussion of the council, that it just isn't put on our agenda to make a decision that night without, you know, a lot more further information, I think, for everybody up here, so.
Yeah, and thank you for that point, and I think that's, I would build that into the approval process tonight, that we would reengage the ad hoc committee, because that was a little bit of a, just maybe, decision that needed to be made from the last meeting is whether or not this body would want to address some of the deeper discussions. I'd imagine that everyone wants to engage directly in the details of it, but thank you for bringing up that point, and I think we're well in tune to bring back that committee together to have those discussions, particularly because there will likely be scenarios, and it's much easier to talk through those in a smaller setting, and then with counsel, ultimate counsel approval. Any further requests to speak? Anybody here in the audience or anyone sitting up here? Yes, ma'am, you'd like to speak on the aquatics? And would you mind, yeah, that way Tom can pick you up on the microphone. Microphone on, is a, is a blue button or green button on? Maybe hit the push, it says push. There you go. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
And introduce yourself, please, if you wouldn't mind.
Diane Wickstrom. Is there any talk about coordinating with the hospital and having aquatic rehab in there also? Maybe you've covered that and I don't know.
And we didn't cover it, but that's a question really for Brett, because it was a little bit out of our scope for the aquatics, but
Okay.
the answer is yes, and I think Brett can maybe give you more details on that front.
Thank you.
But thanks for raising it. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move into, I guess I'd entertain a motion on the, on the committee's recommendation. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. I'd move that the city of Wisconsin Rapids pursue a partnership with the Southwood County YMCA on an aquatic center with more information coming back to the ad hoc aquatics committee before final approval by the council.
Thank you. Looks like I've got a second by Alderperson Dolan. Thank you. We have a motion by Kirkpatrick, second by Dolan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Shane, clear that out. There we go. We'll move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight A's and zero N's.
Thank you all. Look forward to bringing that information back. Item number 10, standing council committee reports. Item A is finance and property committee meeting held December 2nd. Alderperson Stack, please.
Correct, and we'll be doing the second one held tonight as well.
Oh, right, okay. And 16.
Good evening to members of the council and to members at home. My name is James Stack. I'm chairman of the finance and property committee. The finance and property committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, December 2nd, 2014, in the first floor conference room at city hall. All members were present. Also attending were Alderpersons Kirkpatrick, Rayom, and Furkey. Item one, the meeting was called to order. Item two, there were no special beer license applications. Item three, consider sale of city property to Aspiris Wausau Hospital Incorporated. Three A, parcel one being the west portion of parcel number 07-00302, excluding that portion reserved for State Highway 54 and containing 3,484 square feet. It was moved by Whirl, second by Dolan, to approve the sale of parcel 07-00302. Motion carried. Item three B, parcel two being the west portion of parcel 07-00302A, excluding that portion reserved for State Highway 34 and containing 3,860 square feet. It was moved by Whirl, second by Dolan, to approve the sale of item property 07-00302A. Motion carried. Parcel three being part of Outlot Two of Certified Survey Map 9058 and containing 14,854 square feet. It was moved by Whirl, second by Dolan, to approve the sale of the Outlot Two of Certified Survey Map 9058. Motion carried. Note, parcels one and two are generally located north of Oak Street and east of the 21st Place North Right of Way. Parcel three is generally located immediately south of 2031 Peach Street. Beverage operators license applications. It was moved by Whirl, second by Dolan, to approve new licenses for the following. Motion carried. It was moved by Whirl, second by Dolan, to approve renewal license applications for the following, renewal licenses for the following applicants. Motion carried. Item four C, there were no licenses recommended for denial. Item five, audit of the bills. It is moved and seconded to pay the bills voucher number 573641112014 to number 5767311302014. Motion carried. It was moved and seconded to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 5:20 PM. Meeting number two was held this evening. The finance and property committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, December 16th, 2014, in the first floor conference room at city hall. All members were present. Also attending were Adam Teagan, Shane Blazer, Andrew Kirkpatrick, and Todd Furkey. The meeting was called to order. Item two, consider sale of city property to Aspiris Wausau Hospital Incorporated, part of Lot One of Certified Survey Map Number 2483, containing .5197 acres, 22,640 square feet. Property is generally located north of Oak Street and west of State Highway 54. It is moved by Whirl, second by Dolan, to approve the sale of part of Lot One of Certified Survey Map 2483, containing 0.5197 acres, 22,640 square feet, for $6,300. Motion carried. It was moved, second to adjourn. The meeting adjourned at 5:30 PM. James Stack, chairperson. Terry Dolan, secretary. Your Honor, I move for adoption of these two reports.
We have a motion to approve the reports by Stack, second by Alderperson Whirl. It was discovered in the minutes that the dollar figures were omitted from the minutes.
I noticed that too.
So I was just questioning what the aggregate number was, and caught, I caught it, so I guess, do we have numbers available? Adam, is that something you've got handy that we could, or somebody could offer an amendment to the minutes and make sure it gets added in there?
Sorry.
Thank you.
So you're looking for the initial three parcels, the values?
Correct.
Okay. The .341 acre parcel, the value was $4,160.
$4,160?
Yep.
That was 00302, parcel number?
Yes.
Okay, next one.
And then parcel 302A is $1,080.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, 302 is actually $975. The parcel that did not, or the property that did not have a parcel number is the $4,160.
Okay, thank you. And then the report from the one tonight, right, was that?
That one is $6,300.
So I'm, oh, I see, that was a CSM, I'm sorry. For some reason I had my notes, I had three of them. Okay, thank you for those numbers. We'll get those edited in the minutes. With that, I'd entertain any other discussion on the reports? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight A's and zero N's.
Next item under 10B, public works committee meeting held December 2nd. Alderperson Rayom.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met at 5:30 PM on December 2nd, 2014, in the common council chambers in city hall. All members were present. Also attending were Dave Laspa, Joe Eichsted, Nick Dooms. List of others present is on file in the clerk's office. Item one, the meeting was called to order. The item two, the committee held an open house for the following street reconstruction projects. A, Van Buren Street, 8th Avenue North to 10th Avenue North. B, 7th Avenue North, Harrison Street to High Street. C, Apple Street, 12th Street South to 15th Street South. And D, 17th Avenue North, the former railroad tracks to Rosecrant Street. Item three, the committee held an open house for the intersection modification of 8th Street South and Chestnut Street, Wisconsin DOT ID 69990678. Item four, at 6:00 PM, the committee held public hearings and considered final resolutions for the installation of municipal improvements on. A, Van Buren Street, 8th Avenue North to 10th Avenue North. Speaking against the project were Rob Miller, property conversion specialist, 675 East State Street, Iowa, Wisconsin owner of 450 10th Avenue North, and Janice Winters, 2660 17th Avenue, owner of 511 8th Avenue North. No one spoke for the project. There's motion, and second, to recommend approval of the project, including the following final resolution. The motion carried, and that resolution is attached in the minutes. For B, 7th Avenue North, Harrison Street to High Street, no one spoke against or in favor of the project. There's a motion and a second to recommend approval of the project, including the final following final resolution, and the motion carried, and again, the final resolution is included in the packet. Item four C, the Apple Street to 12th Street South to 15th Street South, no one spoke against or in favor of the project. There was a motion and a second to recommend approval of the project, including the final, following final resolution. The motion carried, and that final resolution again is included in the packet. Four D, 17th Avenue North, the former railroad tracks to Rosecrant Street. Speaking against the project were Gary Stimmick, 501 17th Avenue North, Kimberly Stimmick, 501 17th Avenue North, Dean Schumacher, 2920 Redden Road, owner of 511 17th Avenue North, McGay Schumacher, 2920 Redden Road, owner of 511 20, 511 17th Avenue North, and Tom Volart, 4410 Cory Road, owner of 521 17th Avenue North. No one spoke in favor of the project. There's a motion and a second to recommend approval of the permanent street surfacing, sanitary sewer, water mains, sanitary and water leads, and the following final resolution, which is amended to remove curb and gutter and sidewalk, and that motion carried. The final resolution again is attached in the minutes. Item five, a request from Aspiris to vacate Oak Street from 372.83 feet east of 20th Street to 5, to 5.66 feet east of 20th Street South. There's a motion and a second to recommend approval of the vacation and the following resolution. The motion carried, and that resolution is attached in the minutes. Item six, review and recommend the award to the low-qualified bidder of the safe routes to school sidewalk and crossing improvements, a federally funded project, Wisconsin DOT ID 69990777. The bids were opened shortly after 3:00 PM on Tuesday, December 2nd, 2014. The low-qualified bid in the amount of $241,367,045 was received from S.D. Ellenbecker, Incorporated of Athens, Wisconsin. A motion and a second was made to recommend a low-qualified bid, and that amount received from S.D. Ellenbecker of Athens, and the motion carried. That's attachment one in our packet. Item seven, request to remove the speed limit ordinance around Sandlot Park to reduce the number of signs that need to be replaced as follows. Three, speed limit shall be 20 miles per hour on A, Goodno Avenue from Sampson Street to 250 feet west of Lincoln Street when children are present. B, Sampson Street from Wood Avenue to Goodno Avenue when children are present. C, Wood Avenue from Cliff Street to Sampson Street when children are present. There's a motion and a second to recommend removal of the 20 mile per hour speed limit around Sandlot Park. Motion carried. That's item two in the packet. Item eight, that, I reviewed the proposed 2015 public works project schedule. Committee reviewed the schedule. Item nine was to review the referral list. The committee reviewed the referral list. Item 10, there's motion and a second to adjourn. The motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 7:07 PM, and with that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
We have a motion for approval by Alderperson Rayom and a second by Alderperson Kirkpatrick. Move into discussion? Anybody wishing to speak on the public works committee meeting agenda, minutes, I'm sorry? Alderperson Kirkpatrick?
I got Dave over here.
Dave, I'm sorry, please.
I just had some communication from the DOT's management consultant on item six. S.D. Ellenbecker needs to have the disabled business enterprise documents approved by DOT, so they're recommending that we conditionally approve the award pending the approval of the disabled business enterprise documents by Wisconsin DOT.
We'll add that. Would you accept that in your second? Thank you. So that has been addition, added in the item number six. Any further requests to speak? Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. I, there's residents in the audience tonight from, from the public hearings, and if they wish to speak, I'd recognize them.
Anybody wish to address the body? Okay. You're just to watch the action, thank you. All right. Anybody else wishing to speak on the report, the public works committee meeting held December 2nd? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight A's and zero N's.
Thank you. Item number 10C, which is the human resources committee meetings held December 2nd, December 8th, and December 16th. Alderperson Whirl, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, fellow councilmen, viewers at home. There are two reports this evening. Report number one, the human resources committee met at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, December 2nd, 2014, in the third floor conference room. All committee members were present. All others are on list, in a file in the clerk's desk. Item two, consider a request to add a school crossing guard position. There was a motion and a second to approve the request to add to a school, add a school crossing guard position on 28th Street North and Washington Street on a temporary basis. Before the 2016 budget is approved, the need for the position will be reevaluated based on criteria used to initiate this request. The motion, motion carried. Item three, consider a request for an interim city engineer. There was a motion and a second to approve the request by the mayor to appoint Joe Eichsted as interim city engineer effective January 2nd. All the person Whirl, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, fellow councilmen, viewers at home. There are two reports this evening. Report number one, the human resources committee met at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, December 2nd, 2014, in the third floor conference room. All committee members were present. All others are on list, in a file in the clerk's desk. Item two, consider a request to add a school crossing guard position. There was a motion and a second to approve the request to add to a school, add a school crossing guard position on 28th Street North and Washington Street on a temporary basis. Before the 2016 budget is approved, the need for the position will be reevaluated based on criteria used to initiate this request. The motion, motion carried. Item three, consider a request for an interim city engineer. There was a motion and a second to approve the request by the mayor to appoint Joe Eichsted as interim city engineer effective January 2nd. Before the 2016 budget is approved, the need for the position will be reevaluated based on criteria used to initiate this request. The motion, motion carried. Item 3, consider a request for an interim city engineer. There was a motion and a second to approve the request by the mayor to appoint Joe Eichsted as interim city engineer effective January 1st, 2015, and that motion carried. Item 4, consider a request to approve the following revised human resources policies. Policy A, requesting personnel. B, recruitment and selection. And C, transportation for city business. There was a motion and a second to approve the revisions to the three human resources policies as printed. Motion carried. The policies are attached for your reading enjoyment. Item 5, there was a motion and a second to go into closed session. A roll call vote was taken, voting in the affirmative. Motion carried in closed session. The committee discussed collective bargaining, planning and strategy. The committee adjourned in closed session. Beth, there is no time. Motion was made and the committee adjourned in closed session. Question mark. Report number 2, the Human Resources, the Human Resources Committee met this evening at 5:45 in the third floor conference room, December 16th, 2014. All committee members were present. Item 2, discuss and approve a tentative labor agreement for base wages in 2015 with, with the local 1075 DPW group. There was a motion and a second to approve. Motion carried. Item 3, discuss and approve a tentative labor agreement for base wages in 2015 with the asset group. There was a motion and a second, and that motion carried also. The meeting adjourned. The motion and a second, meeting adjourned at 6:00 PM. With that, I'll make a motion to approve both reports.
We have a motion to approve by Whirl and seconded by Furkey. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing none, we'll move in, oh, Alder Person Rayom, please. Computer sometimes is a little bit slow.
Well, I was debating. I guess the, on, well, report 1. Item 4 and A, just the short, I guess, what really is, what's the change from what was to what is?
Beth, did you want to speak to that?
If that can be done in a short version.
Please.
I've read it and tried to make.
There's a lot going on there.
But maybe I'll hear more.
I'll try to make it short. Basically, we're just trying to have the positions approved through the budget process so that it doesn't have to come back to committee again. That's it in a nutshell.
So ultimately, the, the committee and, well, ultimately, the committee and council approval still is, is met, I think, but just making sure that that's clear to everyone at that process. It's just solidifying a timeframe in which position requests will come before administration into the council for consideration from that standpoint. Any other requests to speak? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight As and zero Ns.
Item number 11, under miscellaneous reports. Item A is the Airport Commission meeting held November 13th. Item B, the Housing Authority held October 29th. Item C, the Police and Fire Commission held November 12th. Item D, the Treasurer's monthly report for October. Item E, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department monthly organizational summary for November. The Wisconsin Rapids Police Department monthly report for November. The Water Works and Lighting Commission held November 12th. The regular meeting and November 12th, a special meeting. Item H is the Aquatics Ad hoc Committee held October 28th, November 12th and December 3rd. Item I, the Wastewater Treatment Commission, held December 8th. And item J, the City Treasurer's report on investments for November. Council members, what are your wishes regarding those reports? We have a motion to accept by Kellogg. Is there a second? Second by Kirkpatrick. Move into discussion. Anybody wishing to speak? See no requests to speak. Moving to vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight As and zero Ns.
Item 12, items for new business at the January 20th council meeting. There are none. Item 13, at this point, item 13, under ordinances. Sue, was there anything, nothing under there? Shouldn't have been on there. Item 14, referral of communications to committees. Understand there, there might be a committee of the whole at some point in January. When speaking with the council president, has that been any consideration? I guess you'll be in touch with the council or the clerk's office on scheduling that?
Probably week of the 12th.
Okay, very good. Any other referral of communication to committees? Alder Person Rayom, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I thought I was going to bring a communication with me of what Scott has a referral on Riverbank there that I think probably, we talked about which committee it should go to. I think probably Public Works, at least to start with, so.
And that's on the Riverbank?
I don't have the wording right with me, but.
Riverbank brush, was it the brush policy?
Yeah, yeah.
Which I saw Cruz out cut and brush today, so we may, at least from a, a maintenance standpoint, that issue might be put to bed, but it sounds like he still want to approach a policy, so that is a referral to Public Works, right?
Yes, basically, I have a constituent that is interested in, or concerned about trimming the shrubbery along the river, because it's one of the attractive parts of our city, to be able to see that. And now Jim is working on that, and I appreciate it, but then they're also, this person is interested in entertaining the idea of ordinance. And so we're contacting the DNR, so you can't create an ordinance without making sure you cover your bases with the DNR. So that's the process right now, and so you'll hear about it in a month from now or whenever, when we contact them and start to make sure we have the ordinance in the right shape and what it would sound like.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you all for being here. Wish you all a happy holiday and Happy New Year.